Yes, everybody stand. We're gonna say the pledge of allegiance to Snapper. I'm gonna ask Alderman Gardner, say our prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most heavenly and gracious Father, I just wanna come thank you for allowing us to be here today, Father God. Father God, I just wanna ask that you help and allow us to make the betterment decisions for the best of our city of Vidalia, Father God. In our darling son Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
Amen. Okay. It's like welcome everybody here. We're gonna start off with the roll call. I would like to make note that our, 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 uh...
City clerk.
City clerk. He's got the almost pneumonia, so he's kinda out. So stepping in, it's gonna be council that's gonna do roll call.
It's Board of Aldermen roll call for the regular public meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen on April ninth, two thousand nineteen. Alderman Betts.
Present.
Alderman Dory.
Present.
Alderman Gardner.
Here.
Alderman McCoy.
Present.
Alderman Probst.
Yeah.
Mayor, you have a call.
Okay. First thing on our, before we get to item one, is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. Is there any questions from council on the minutes? If not, are here motion, we accept the minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes.
Alderman Gardner already made the motion. Are here second. You want your set to be a second?
He made the motion.
Yeah, he said it real quick.
Oh, excuse me. Alderman Probst made the motion.
No, Alderman Gardner, yeah.
But I was seconding.
Seconded by Alderman Probst. All in favor?
Aye. And I left staying from voting on that.
Cause you were... I gotta look at that.
Okay, first item on our...
That was, Mr. Mayor, that was...
Pardon?
That was for both minutes.
Yes.
Now, do I, do he need to do a second for the special meeting?
No.
Okay, alright. So let's bring this to the item number one on our agenda, which is gonna be reviewed in the financial statement for February, and that's gonna be our CPA, Mrs. Deborah Moke.
Um, well, the financials for tonight's meeting have been distributed to the Alderman and the department heads. They include the balance sheet as of February the twenty eighth, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the eight months ending February twenty eighth, a budget to actual comparison by fund, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. The balance sheet is also presented, and it indicates that we have four point five million in cash, which includes the two point three million in the hydro royalty fund. We have investments of three point eight million, total assets of thirty-two point six million, total liabilities of six point one million, and a fund balance of twenty-six point five million combined. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance for the eight months ending February the twenty eighth shows that we have a combined revenues of twenty-nine point one million, total expenditures of twenty-five point five million, and a change in net position of three point five million. The town should be at thirty-three percent remaining, and the projected expenses overall were at thirty-five percent remaining, balance level in expenditures, and thirty-two percent in revenues. If all the expenses and revenues received or expensed at the end of the year, at the end of the fiscal year, the projection would be a decrease in net position by three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. This decrease is primarily due to a transfer that was made from the industrial park fund to the utility fund for utility payments made from Vidalia denim. The town is currently in good financial position. We are where we should be according to the budget. The budget indicated a three million dollar change, the budget indicates a three million dollar change in net position. We're at three point five. We are maintaining cash flow. The twenty nineteen twenty budget process has begun. We had an initial meeting with the department heads and Aldermen who could attend. We are hopeful to present a budget in May for the twenty nineteen twenty fiscal year. The current, the town's current financial position is being carefully monitored, and in the event actual expenditures and other usage, uses, and projected expenditures exceed the total budget expenditures and other uses by five percent or more, the mayor will advise the board. This applies to revenues and other sources and fund balances. A budget analysis is presented to assist with the five percent calculation. That's good.
Okay, is there any questions of Ms. Moke before we go forward? That's a good report, always hear that. At this time also during the financial report, I'm probably gonna start interjecting letting, whether it be the fire department or the police chief, interject, you know, any kind of report they wanna do as far as the number of tickets. If that's something that the public might find interesting, we might start incorporating that into this period, you know, and if y'all, if any of y'all wanna do a report tonight, I, you know, we'll just hear it of where you're at on as far as like tickets written and things of that nature. Some people would be curious to know that, so we're looking maybe making that a part of our regular meeting, so. Does Johnny, you or Joey have, wanna say anything?
I've got mine ready. Just once we, it was regular month, it wasn't busy, it wasn't slow, it was just a regular month. We had a total of eight hundred and fourteen dispatch calls, we made forty-two arrests, one hundred and ninety citations, the total activity for the month, one thousand one hundred and twenty-four, us combined and everything together.
Any questions from council? Okay, alright, thank you, Joey. Okay. Next, next item on our agenda is occupational license applications, and the first one is Jody Nichols and Lisa Nichols. Are they here tonight? How are you doing? You wanna tell us a little bit about your business?
Um, sure. We actually have been in the day air for a year and a half. We have three other locations in Monroe, West Monroe, and Basta. And since we've been here, everyone has embraced what we do, and we've been able to explain it. So when I opening our second location, the old thing is the property building, we actually have about three thousand square feet worth of steam to do. And so we're also incorporating a new IOP, which is an intensive outpatient program for addiction recovery, so we're gonna be opening that. And then we also will be opening an ABA, Applied Behavioral Analysis Therapy for children with autism. That's going to stay off.
Okay, well, thank you. You got, so you have two, two footprints in Vidalia then?
Yes.
That's great. Now, one of the things that Jay did show me, that you did have a sign application, but we got it late, but it's basically not gonna be out on the street, it's gonna be against the building, is that correct? And I saw a copy of it, and it looked okay, but, you know, council, I guess if we could...
It's in the packet, ma'am.
Did he get it in there?
Yes, sir, it is.
Cause I had my packet earlier, and I, so I did see it, so y'all...
I'll make the motion to approve both sign and business application.
Okay, motion made.
Can we do it that way? Mr. Mayor, we need to wait.
He doesn't wait.
Okay, I'll make motion to approve the business, the occupational license.
Okay, the motion made by Alderman Dory. Are here second.
Second.
Alderman Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you again. Okay, next is Anthony Smith. Uh, is Anthony here? Okay, Anthony, can you tell us about yours?
Absolutely. I'm currently clean teeth, customizing all the detailing, mission statements to provide outstanding quality customer service to the Vidalia and the Misslou area. And satisfaction to the Misslou area, we provide ourselves with great customer service to keep all of your vehicles clean, protected with a friendly professional service, cars, boats, side-by-side trucks, and et cetera. We offer many services such as basic boat power wash, oil, service detailing, interior exterior packages. We also have reasonable rates for senior citizens, first responders, sheriff department, police department, ambulance, fire department, and et cetera. Veterans discounts as well for all ages that are serving our country. Safety first, we provide hazmat cleaning for spills, bloodborne pathogens, human and animal hiccup in your cars, vehicles. We use the finest products from mighty distributors and more, offering a hundred percent hand washing with the finest, uh, the finest soft towels. Our goals of business, business, customer satisfaction guaranteed, become a green-based business, bringing that to the Vidalia and Misslou area, environmentally safe with our products and vehicles, and vehicles insured, pickup and delivery is with.
He's gonna move.
Alright. Any questions?
I have one question. This nine hundred Texas Street, is that your residence?
That's my residence.
Okay, and were you so advised that by doing so, you would qualify for commercial rates on your residence?
No, no, I haven't, I haven't, I didn't know about, but that would be my office area.
Uh-huh.
I'm currently located in three thirty-nine Global Bureau in Natchez.
Thank you for bringing it over, yeah.
Yes, and, uh, once I get my truck ready to operate in Vidalia, I'll provide mobile service to this area as well, service in Misslou area, both, Natchez and Vidalia.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Well, you, you don't have a location then other than your home here, right? Right now?
That's, that's my office.
But you're planning on opening up anything?
If I, well, if, in the near future, not in the near future, but in the future. But, but now, I'll have, I'm gonna get my truck ready, and I, like I say, I pick up and deliver.
Okay.
And I also, once my mobile detail is, is set up, I'll come and use it with.
Okay.
The only thing we might, might have question about, I mean, and I appreciate you bringing businesses, is the number of cars you might have as census of residents, you know, on a daily basis. Are you gonna just kinda limit yourself to picking up and handling one at a time?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
And like I say, I have my location in, uh, Natchez, on service and Toyota dealership now over there.
Okay.
And, uh, I, as well, I'll take vehicles over there to my location to give them service.
Okay, any other questions? Are here motion, we accept?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Alderman, uh, McCoy, are here second.
Second.
Alderman Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Right now on the sign, we'll back up to the sign application, which we've already discussed. Are here motion, we accept the sign application for the, for the Easy Living Home Care LLC?
I so moved.
Moved by Alderman Dory. Seconded by Alderman Gardner, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Number four on our item is, is on our list, is board consideration of a resolution to change the name of one Fruit of the Loom Drive to one King Timahole Drive to the request, to request Concordia Parish Communications District to make and implement that change. Uh, is there any questions on that?
Yes, I do, personally.
Okay.
I've received several calls in reference to the name being changed. I know it's a former president's dog's name. I don't think it's so much of it being the dog's name itself, but maybe the reflection of the president at the time and the things that he did or went through, so, um, I got a lot of people feeling as if, and I feel personally, I feel like we maybe should just consider changing it, or they should consider changing it to maybe somebody in our area who has worked or retired, and that was my thought process, cause about two years ago, I asked the question to the nine-one-one board, um, about changing, um, a street name, and they told me that we wasn't allowed to change, uh, old name to a new name. Only new street names could be changed, so all of a sudden, I don't know how this old name is now being able to be changed to a, a new name.
Okay, I don't, I don't know what, what transpired as far as what streets you want to name. I think I do, I'm not sure, but nine-one-one has worked with Jay on this at the request of, of Vidalia denim, this is what their request, and I understand them wanting to change it, I certainly understand that. And we looked through the things that we had to do to do that, and nine-one-one has worked with us, and they're gonna be the ones that would, based on, that's been approved, is going to the tax assessor clerk court, the national mapping services, and post office, and all getting these things set up, and, and they, they're approving this. Uh, you know, that, of course, this is gonna be at the discretion of the board, what y'all wanna do. Is there any other comments, one way or another?
A lot just got through talking to the nine-one-one coordinator, she lives across the street from me. The thing is, working with the post office for years, I never put those position, those people in that position that they had to name a street, or even said that it would be done. According to her, it was in the contract or something, uh, which I haven't seen all the contracts, but we should never put nine-one-one, that's their job to name streets, number streets, that's their job. It's not our job. As a postal service, we didn't even go in there and request that kinda stuff. We just said, you have to talk to them, the company, or the individual, or the landowner, or whoever it was that was wanting to get a street done, so we never dealt with nine-one-one like that. And I don't feel as a city, we should put that in, as I talked to her, she felt like we just had a special meeting today. I said, just had a special meeting today? Well, this has been on the books for months, a year, year, I mean, you know, a long time, and then today we have a special meeting to do this. So, again, Fruit of the Loom was a entity that was in our community that brought jobs, that built a building, that produced things in our community, and to take that away, to me, is not a good thing either, because they didn't make a mark in our community. And, I mean, if we wanna go out there and change a street name of somebody, uh, would that be a slap in the face to them? I would think if they're still living, or if they're still operating, you know? So I just don't agree with that at all. That's my opinion.
Well, I just know in the negotiations with this company, that, that's one of the things that, you know, they requested, and when you're dealing with trying to, and when you're trying to get a company, you know, you kinda, there's something that you can maybe help them with, I, I promise you, I'd wanna do that. I can certainly see them wanting to be, especially far as branding, and their customers they're gonna be doing business with might be Fruit Loom, might be a competitor, I certainly can understand them if they're, I wouldn't want Fruit Loom on that street. Yeah, well, we appreciate what Fruit Loom has done, but they also pulled out. These people are coming in, gonna provide us jobs too.
Yeah, but they ain't even got here yet, but matter of fact, let's put it that way. I'm waiting, because I get calls daily, where are they at, what are they doing?
Well, I...
But again, they'll improve themselves, like I said before, then we can reconsider that, but I just don't agree with it.
Okay.
That's enough said for me.
Heather had her hand up.
I was just gonna remind and confirm that in the cooperative endeavor agreement, that was approved by the board, it is a responsibility of the town to rename the road, it states that the city shall, at its earliest convenience, rename the road currently named Fruit of the Loom to King Timahole. Now, we did not realize, and I don't think until we began pulling the resolution together to see what the steps were, that it was beyond the authority of the town, and it was indeed the responsibility of nine-one-one to do it.
Correct.
But we did work with them and explain what the situation was. I went to their meeting today to answer any questions they may have, and they may have had, they had that question, to answer what's going on. They realized it was a unique circumstance, that they do not typically change road names. And, uh, I mean, they asked it unanimously, no question.
But again, it goes back to Heather, we weren't involved a lot with all that. I mean, we got a thing thrown in front of us, but basically the board was not involved with the negotiations or anything, and you know that. I mean, that's the truth.
But you also voted...
Okay, I, I understand that, but again, now I'm, I'm gonna say now we're discussing it, so let's discuss it, and I don't agree with it.
But in your agreement, that is...
Okay, okay, I understand that.
That you shall, it doesn't say...
Okay, right.
How many, how many times during the course of the negotiation, because that was April first, two thousand seventeen, how many times in the course of the cooperative endeavor and the, the finalization of the sale, were things changed to benefit Vidalia denim? How many things were, you know, within the cooperative endeavor, there were several milestones and several things that should've and could've been done that we didn't force them to do? And I understand that we wanted to get the business in, and we wanted to do all of that, but even in your statement that when we put it into the cooperative endeavor, you did not know that this was not something that the town of Vidalia could even do?
Correct.
That this was not for the power of Vidalia. So that kinda voids it there. Um, and a second part of that is, at the time, cause I'm, I'm kind of like Alderman Gardner, I've received a lot of complaints about this today, when it finally came to the public, that this was the name that was chosen. City of Vidalia did not change, choose this name, this name was chosen by Vidalia denim. But at the time of the cooperative endeavor, you know, we did approve the cooperative endeavor because we, just like you, and just like everybody else, we wanted to attract that industry in. Now we're receiving backlash from that. There's a lot of people, especially veterans in our area, who have complained about the choice of name. And our, our obligation, in my opinion, is more to the residents of Vidalia than to this one business. Um, you know, if this is an insult to the face of the veterans of, of Concordia Parish, that's an absolute stop right there. Um, and like I said, the city didn't choose this name, but the city is now tasked with passing this, and I'm having a hard time with making that many people upset because of the name that was chosen by this company. And, and like you say, you, you know, it was put into the cooperative endeavor, but we had no right to do that. It was not within our power to do so. So we have now expensed more time and effort in correcting the mistake that was made in the cooperative endeavor to make this happen, and we never even asked anybody in the public how they felt about it. And I think that's what kinda happened now, and the people are upset.
Ms. Lynch?
To say we're upset is putting in my... I hold my mayor, all the Aldermen, I hold economic development, to do their homework. Don't just assume, just because some business is coming in to bring us jobs and pay taxes, that if it's not for the betterment of everybody in the city, then we need to rethink everything that's there that's not gold. Now, the street names have gotten out of hand, in my opinion. We have street names down here, Vernon Stevens, I can't say his name, starting with an H.
I'm sorry.
Anyway, all these people's names, okay, I'm not being racist, but here you come. Very nice streets. I like these streets. Very nice around here. I know of one street named after a black person, Scotty here from Long, McCray Lane, I don't like that street. Daryl McCray did a lot. He was an Alderman, he worked for the sales department, he helped senior citizens, he got that little ugly street right out for Carter Street. Then you got the cherry, you got the fruit tree, you got the spruce and the magnolias. And then you're gonna come and name this street. It's a cute dog.
Oh, you pulled the dog?
It's an Irish dog, it's a cute dog. His name is one King Chillo. Okay, I have a problem with that. That president was impeached by the United States, by the people. And then you're gonna turn around and bring him to Vidalia, and put him where Fruit of the Loom is, cause that's what they want. They need to step up their game, employ more people, instead of the two or three or whatever. It's not enough. And y'all need to fix it. I would consider it a big insult.
Okay, and I, I appreciate your comment. Let me just say this, okay? We didn't name it the president's name, it's a dog, it was probably a very nice...
It was president dog.
It was a probably a very nice dog. I don't know, but...
My dog is a very nice dog.
Let me finish talking. Let me finish talking, please. All I'm saying, look, if the council don't go along with the change, Cassandra, that's fine, that's their, that's their call to make. All I'm saying is, we, you know, I don't know if the, a dog didn't do anything wrong. This is what those people requested, they asked for that, okay? Now, I am not gonna sit up here and, and let this meeting sound like these people aren't welcoming, you don't, hadn't seen nothing yet, y'all didn't know this, I didn't know that. Derek, you wanna give us an update on where y'all at? That's gonna be your plant manager right there, go ahead, go ahead and tell them where you at.
How y'all doing? My name is Derek Vane, I've been here since two thousand nine. I actually came here from Alabama, Georgia to run Fruit of the Loom. I used to run Fruit of the Loom from two thousand nine until it closed. Uh, I was here when these people started in twenty sixteen, when that CEO there, Bobby walked in the building with Ellis Malone and I. Two weeks after Fruit of the Loom announced closing of that building. So you gotta understand, I, I worry some of y'all concerned, but these things take time. We gonna load eighty containers in that facility. I told the mayor, he came out last Friday, y'all more than welcome to come, I'll give you a tour. But what's in there, what we got, and what we gonna do, the ten of dates for us things to start, right now, we plan on doing production by August. It's a kinda aggressive goal in my opinion, but that's what my powers of peace say, we will be it, by August. We're finalizing plans and permits so they can start construction, which is set temporarily for May. When that comes, we'll start our timeline, but my project manager who's here, he moved here from Turkey to be the project manager to put this process over Turkey, Italy, the process of what we gonna do with denim, they've kinda perfected, made it cleaner, safer to produce. So we got a guy from Turkey that's gonna head the project up to do that. Once we get those dates set for construction and those things, that builds our timeline for hiring and what we're leading up to, I'll go and do production by August. We met with some other vendors, BASF came two weeks ago, bought a project with the E3 cotton, sustainable cotton, that we're gonna use in this process. Also, we met with another company who's looking at those avenues for the job. I've seen it those meetings. It's, it's been two years, like I said, from the first, up to now, yeah, I've been with those people too, I had to do some things different, I had to go drive trucks until I got back to work with them. But I also been on frontline to see, when all those people lost their job, and these people stepped in two years later, cause it was two years on March the thirtieth to bring potential to jobs to these areas, I think we just need to be a little bit more patient to get behind it, it's gonna benefit. I know with the tax dollars that the city missed when Fruit of the Loom closed, from thirteen to sixteen, just off payroll taxes, property taxes, and utilities, average almost one point five each year. That's not me going to Walmart and get sales back, that's what you got off the top for Fruit of the Loom. My Fruit of the Loom budget, total budget, was a nine million dollars. The payroll for this company is nine million dollars. So with that, I mean, like I said, y'all more than welcome to come, I'm there every day, me, Rob Yakkin, and have another full Fruit of the Loom employee there, had to add as a goal, because like I said, we started getting more equipment and more cotton, it's been a long process. I had to be more patient than anybody. So that's what we are.
Okay, Derek, I never did say I was against that, that, just so we can clear that up. I never said I was against it.
Yeah.
I'm against the name of the street.
And that's...
And again, you work for Fruit of the Loom. Did you bring project to this town that was profitable and brought jobs? So yes, that's the concern some people have. Others are the veterans deal. There's several things that people are concerned about with that change of that street. So it's not the project, it's not the jobs, it's not the Vidalia denim, it's the street that I'm concerned with now.
Yeah.
And the patience, people have been more than patient, I think, because they've called me constantly, I know more of the other, other Aldermen probably get called. So yes, we are being patient, and we, we are wanting those jobs, and we are wanting y'all to open up and get busy making, uh, jobs for this community. But I've never, I've never been against the project, so I just want you to understand, that's not what I was against.
Yes, and to...
Because you stated we were, be patient, you're against it, but it's not that.
No, I, I was saying that, you know, it seems that, you know, somebody, some of y'all, your, it just, your attitude towards it, you know, you're not patient, but...
Who?
July, y'all was here back in July of last year, with all that stuff going on with USDA, all that stuff takes time. Actually, the project is probably a year behind, based off of that. It took almost nine months to secure that funding. Once that was secured, we was all in this meeting, I was in this meeting, Mary bypassed me, I was glad, he wanted me to say something then, I was glad that day, but it, it takes time.
We understand that.
Like I said, frontline, when you see three hundred plus people from fourteen in Fruit of the Loom, and then you started to watch those people lose their job, and this company's willing to bring a amount of jobs back to this area, I mean...
That's good.
I understand the street name, I don't really care what you call the street, you know, that's what mail comes, in my opinion.
That's right.
You got jobs.
That's exactly the way it, way it works.
And to reiterate, to reiterate his point, right now it has flipped. We were talking about a street name.
Right.
And then, you know, bless your hearts, you were brought in as if you, you felt like you had to defend Vidalia denim. All of us are counting on Vidalia denim. We are all, I mean, counting on it. Every one of us who live in this town are counting on it. We're hoping for it, well, I'm praying for it every Sunday, you know? You, you, you have been told that there are some of us that are against it. I request that you talk to each of us individually and find out our own opinion.
And, and...
Because I can state to you here, I'm not against it. I'm not against it at all. So I don't want this discussion, I'm proud of what is being done. I'm glad to hear that there is an August timeline. I think that's fantastic. What I'm, what we're talking about here today is the change of name of the road. And you've got residents of Vidalia who have cared enough to pick up the phone and call people, some of whom I've never heard from before, who are picking up the phone and saying, please don't name this road this. That's all that we're about here today. It has nothing to do with Vidalia denim or bringing the business here, or was it a good idea or a bad idea? Is it a, is it a go or is it a no-go? That's already been done, the deal is done, we're all hoping for it now. What we're talking about here today is the name of the street, and the, there are, I can't say the majority of, and I can't say all of Vidalia. There are people in Vidalia who are strongly against the name that has been chosen. So it falls upon this board to be the voice of the people of Vidalia as far as the name change alone. Everything else is bygones, it's done. Except this.
I wasn't accusing any of y'all of sitting and being negative, I've just, I've been in several of these meetings, I've been in a lot of them, y'all just didn't know who I was. I read the newspaper, I read the comment, I read Facebook, I see all that. I'm just saying some of the things that I've seen and witnessed on my own. I don't need nobody to tell me about my own opinion. If I found my own opinion about what a person, what I deal with that person.
Right.
You know, if that's not one person, like a person, that don't mean I shouldn't dislike them, because they don't like them because we associate them.
That's true.
That's not what I'm saying. I'm not trying to defend Project Blue, Vidalia Denim, Vidalia Industrial, we've changed names several times, but all I was just speaking, what I was speaking earlier was my opinion. The name that people against, well, I mean, I understand that feeling. My main concern is that I'm employed and we're gonna be employed since we've been there again, and like I said, I don't care what the name is. I hope it, I hate it, and people are offended about it, but I didn't choose the name.
Right.
Something that came from the CEO, like I said, that don't have anything to do with my picture.
Right.
Let me ask something. The other thing that I had, the other thing is, Robert Yacke, I've been in touch with him constantly. He was the only employee that was down there.
I talked, you called him when I was standing beside him.
Right, okay, so I've talked to Robert. And then he said y'all had one other employee, and then they got you, correct?
Right, I've been there since January twenty-sixth.
Okay, so I'm saying that's, I have been in touch with Robert constantly. I hadn't been down there because I didn't feel like we needed to go in there, you know? And because it's just a storage house right now as far as bringing your stuff in. So that's why I hadn't been there, but I have been in touch with him off and on for months, you know, keeping up with it. So he was the only employee for several months, correct?
Since August.
There you go, okay.
I got several different feelings, but I appreciate what you're saying. You don't care what the name is, just, let's just go to work. And I appreciate that. And if some study would probably, if somebody would take the time to study some of the streets that we drive on and live on now, you'd probably find some fault in it, in who some of those streets are named after, and what they stood for during their particular time. I know as a black man, I could probably get on that side of the thing and say, you know, I don't wanna live there if I could, if I could help it. But for the greater good of Vidalia, we want a street going to denim, Project Blue, whatever name it is this month, we want a street going there that at least is, I personally don't have a problem with it. But for those that do, is it somebody else other than, is it some higher up that's willing to compromise with the name? I hate to even, I hate to even take this position, but is there somebody else willing to compromise with the name?
Like I said, the problem with the question, that came, I think, from the CEO, Dave White and those, so I mean, it can be discussed with him. I mean, I agree, whatever, best, I don't want people to be upset by the name, I just want peace and love to go. So, I mean, if, I'm sure we got information, y'all can come get in contact with him and go from there. I'll let him know when I leave, I'll be sure to contact and let him know if that's, you know, the issue.
I think I've been pretty vocal on the whole situation about Project Blue, and I might be one of those people you don't like, but I've made, I don't mean it like that, but I think I've said what I need to say as far as that's concerned, and I've been in the building.
I know, I met y'all leaving one day.
I know how much stuff is in the building, how much brand new stuff is in the building. What I want is some Vidalia residents in the building, and whatever we got to do to get to that point, that's, that's my concern. Call it, call it what you want to, just call it a road. Just call it a left turn, right turn. Let's just get some people in the building.
I can see the name change, because if you speak Fruit of the Loom and different companies, Fruit of the Loom don't own the app, so they wanna change the name.
Absolutely.
That's one of my favorite, and like I said, I won't pass that on to my superiors and let them, you all end up discussing it, and it must, I don't, I don't know none of y'all like it, I was just saying about what I've read and seen and heard, been in meetings, that, you know, y'all have a right to be concerned, you have, it's your job to make sure that you get the best possible, and you're not gonna get somebody trying to pull the rug from under you. I understand that, but I'm telling you, here being on frontline, hey, that's a long year to have since I worked for them. I took a gamble myself, Fruit of the Loom offered a job to move to South Carolina. My wife is from here, she said no. I took a gamble and I had to go down there and do something else better than this project. So who don't want it better than me? When you gambling in your livelihood.
Right.
Because I was getting paid real well with Fruit of the Loom, to relocate, I was gonna get paid even better. So I took that gamble, trusted in these people, because that CEO, when he walked in that building with Helen and I, it was like a job interview for me. The first time he walked in there, he liked, he liked what he seen, because the building was neat and clean, and every time they came, it spoke volumes. And he was like, this is Tocqueville Hall, when he read with the vice chairman, who came back in sixteen, so they came in the meeting, in seventeen, they came in the meeting and met with y'all every day. But still, you know, it's, it's been a long process, and like I said, my phone, my Facebook, everything, former employees, people I don't know, go to church, you'll have a plant, we hire people coming to their gate, so I know. And all I'm saying, I tell them, go take the work key and set the test, and we'll post it on everything we got possible when we start taking job applications to hire.
Thank you, Derek, I appreciate that.
I think that, you know, you from the south, most of us in this area, we're all patriots in heart, I believe, and all of us, as Sabrina pointed out, have family members who served in our military. And this, the name of this street, yes, it means something to us. And I think that if there's a way, as Alderman McCollum pointed out, that we could somehow get these people to understand our strong roots as far as our patriot beliefs, maybe if they would consider something else, that, that would be more appropriate to our feelings, to our southern heritage, to our southern beliefs and our Christian beliefs, that maybe it would be, you know, we could look at it and say, well, you know, that's a better idea. I think we should at least give ourselves that option, if possible.
I think that's been, I think that's been the consensus. Again, this was the request of the company, and we added in all this other stuff about, you know, they doubt this, that one, I mean, it did come out, we'll re-watch, you watch the movie, I mean, the movie, you watch this meeting tomorrow on YouTube and see what's being said, it was coming across negative, it did to me. And I, I mean, but I, let's hope it didn't.
Well, I'm for, I'm for Project Blue, I mean, I never have been against it.
But anyway, let's go in, let's get, let's move on, and evidently, do I have a motion to consider that? If we don't get a motion, it'll die as it is, and we'll go back to the, is there a motion to make the change? Is anybody gonna make the motion?
Listen, yeah. I'm gonna go ahead and roll it.
Okay.
On number four, as far as resolution is concerned, I also move that we change the name from Number One Fruit of the Loom Drive to Number One King Timahoe Drive, and request whatever parties that need to be involved to take care of their business with that to do so.
Okay. Motion made by Alderman McCollum, I hear a second.
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Betts.
I'd like, I'd like to say something with that. We all make mistakes. There ain't anybody here that doesn't make mistakes. I don't know why this company wanted that name, I couldn't, couldn't tell you. When it was in the cooperative agreement, I looked at it, naming it after a dog, I don't have any idea, maybe he's an Irish settler lover, I don't know. But the thing about it is, we as a board, whether you agree or you don't agree, we passed a cooperative agreement. Now, to me, my word means something to me. I hope that the board's word means something to everybody that is here. Now, did we make a mistake? I don't know. That's for your opinion, all right. But the thing about it is, is each of us voted for a cooperative agreement, it was in the agreement. We passed that agreement. Now, are we going to be people of our word? Or are we gonna ask them to reconsider? Well, you have the choice. You can vote to change it as it is, you can reject it, and then you can reach out to them. But I think, as far as me, and me, I will vote yes, because I voted for a cooperative agreement that agreed to do that.
Okay, I wanna say something, okay?
Wait a minute, we got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment also then. Okay, I agree with you, John, that's true. And I'm gonna vote more than likely the way I feel, but not persuaded by you, that's the thing. The thing is, we as a board may have made a mistake, but we also were not informed as well as we should, and I hope I made that plain and simple to the parties that be. And again, I think that should have been discussed prior to this point, and it should have been handled way back yonder. Because this has been on the books for how long? It should not have waited that long, it should have never waited that long. It should have been done, but now we're pushed to the brink, and it's not right. That's my statement.
Okay, I'd just like to make a comment on that. You know, y'all said y'all got a lot of calls, I've gotten zero calls. I mean, if you got calls, I, you know, I would, I would have expected, you know, before we got to this point, that if you were doing your job, you was getting that many complaints, you would at least pick up the phone and tell me, hey, Mayor, I'm having problems from my people that I represent, they don't like this. Instead, we get in this meeting, and now y'all got all these people that ain't called our office at all to complain.
You're insinuating that we are not telling the truth, and I take great offense to that.
I have a motion on the floor.
Wait a minute.
No, you are making a statement with that.
That Fruit of the Loom Road be changed to Number One King Timahoe Drive, and that all other parties involved take care of their part of it. There's been a motion and a second.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and put it, vote, we'll do it by roll call.
Alderman Betts? Hold on, Doran?
No.
Alderman Gardner?
Against.
Alderman McCoy?
I'm for it. For it.
Three days, two names, motion taken.
I'd like to make one statement at the end of that vote. Now, we need to reach out to them and ask them if they would consider changing that name to a different name.
We can't now, we just changed it.
I'm just saying, they could still change that thing.
We've got to go through the whole process again if we do that.
But we did, we honored our agreement. Now, let's see if they're willing to reach out and help us.
That's a good point, and I agree with that. I mean, that's a good, that's a great point, it's that kind of contention.
I think that's the way to do it.
I'm not willing to be held up six or eight or ten more months with lawyers changing names and doing different things and paperwork. I was on the phone when that phone call from USDA, because I was gonna vote no, but when USDA said that it was good, that everything was good, I voted yes for us to go ahead and roll through with that.
And that is, that is the case, because all these documents are now entered in with a false address, basically. That's my statement. Is that correct, Heather? Because 911 said that name was never changed, but those documents are really not legal because they had a wrong address on them. Is that correct?
Well, we've seen that, that address a long time ago.
I know, but still, it goes back to the point. We should have handled this thing a whole lot of different ways than we did, and it should have never been this long about getting it done. That's my point.
Okay.
And I don't think it's us who's not doing our job.
Let's move it on, let's move on to number five. Board consideration renewed the town contract with Air Med Care Network for 2019 through 2020, and we've done this for the last, how many years? It's, it's been, okay. Would y'all like to go ahead and address the board?
May I have a, um, chief?
Sure, sure.
Um, there are a few changes in this agreement due to reimbursements, um, business models changing, you know, everybody who's in business, your, your models can change based on the times, okay? So one of the changes in that agreement is the standard rate goes from thirty-five to forty-five, unless you're sixty years or older, then it remains at the thirty-five dollars. Um, to give you some facts, Adams County, because this agreement covers all of the city residents, if you're picked up, Adams County, Concordia Parish, Catahoula Parish. So I'm gonna give you some statistics, okay? Adams County, we had four hundred and forty-eight lights in the last year. Catahoula Parish, we had sixteen flights. Um, Concordia Parish, we had thirty-two flights, okay? With the average cost of flight to anyone across the nation is about forty thousand dollars, okay? By having this agreement in place, you basically say your residents got forty thousand dollars if they're picked up out of any one of those three locations. Uh, the price stays the same, the nineteen thousand dollars is in the agreement. Um, so anybody got any questions that they'd like to ask?
And that's a one-way trip.
That's a one-way trip, but for a hundred and thirty-four dollars, I can teach you to go. Now, we've also, also, we didn't say that, I'm kidding aside, um, we offered a new program, it's a non-emergent program to residents, so if they're a hundred and fifty miles away from home, and they belong to our membership, we have paid for the non-emergent service of a hundred and thirty-four dollars. Um, the patient who needs to come, call us, we'll get you to a facility closer to your home within twenty-four hours. And the beauty of that is, is there is no doctor's orders required for that. So it's totally a patient preference. So if you were on vacation, something happened, and you wanted to get closer to home, Alexandria, Jackson, wherever you wanna go, we will get you closer to home, if you're a member of the non-emergent service.
So if the town were to not do this, and I wanted to join, what would the cost for me be?
The cost for you and everyone in your household, because you're under sixty years old, it's gonna be eighty-five dollars for the whole year, covers everyone in your household.
Okay. And so by the town paying the nineteen thousand some odd dollars, that price is reduced to forty-five?
Yes, if you're under, I think, to sixty.
Right.
If you're over sixty, stay at thirty-five.
So the town then is paying forty dollars-ish for my family, so about half.
Correct.
How many, how many Vidalia residents do you actually have? I mean, is that something we could get, is that, how many residents?
I requested that information, um, how many of these folks were Vidalia residents? I was unable to obtain it by the time of this meeting, because that's a lot of information to go through. So I can give it to the board at your next meeting if you'd like to know that information.
Okay. I have another question, you know, let's say somebody, you have to airlift me, and I'm a Vidalia resident, and we're members, and, and there's something life-threatening, and they gotta fly me somewhere. Where would, where's the benefit? Where's it gonna save me if I'm insured? Where's that savings for me if I'm, if you?
Well, the savings for you is you wouldn't be hit with that forty thousand dollar bill. But if you live here, you got Fruit of the Loom for gear, you wouldn't have a forty thousand dollar bill, okay? It lets you purchase a car, lets you purchase a house, you're not paying some out-of-state company this big amount for being airlifted. So it keeps your money in your community, keeps your taxes, your tax base still the same, somebody can afford that house where they couldn't afford it if they had to. Somebody can afford that house where they couldn't afford it if they had to pay that bill. So that's, that's one benefit. The other benefit is to get you to a Level One trauma facility when they're in the town. Our, our facilities here are great, they do the best with what they have, okay? It's very expensive to run a trauma one facility. So, when they can't handle the situation, that's when they get us involved. Now, the other interesting thing that I don't think has been shared at all is that, since we've acquired AMR ground service, that if for some reason we're unable to fly you, which you still need our care, our, our nurse in paramedic will also ride along with the paramedics in the ground service. That's, that's just part of the membership to have that.
Is that the extra membership, or are you talking about what the city provides?
That's what you're, the city provides that in the $19,000.
That, that $85 that you're talking about, that didn't have that, and that's just for Adams County, Concordia Parish and Catahoula Parish pickup, right?
Right, your $19,000 that the city pays is for only pickup out of those two counties.
Right.
And the $35 and $45 membership, that's an upgrade. And what that means, you're covered throughout our footprint. So if you're in California, we have a base in California, you get flown there, from there, you, you still don't have to go.
If y'all are unavailable to fly me, for whatever the case may be, and, and someone else has to, do y'all offer reimbursement service?
Um, no, we don't. And the chances of, of another aircraft coming in this area is, it can happen, but we, we put our bases strategically located so we can cover each other. So if the Natchez base is out servicing somebody else, we've got Rayville, we've got Winfield, we've got Opelousas, we've got McComb, so there's a wide variety. Now, some of those may not be the air, be that helicopters. The one in Winfield is like a rescue, the one in McComb is Mississippi Air Rescue now. So it's, there's 57 different planes that we have. And it's all covered under the one membership, that's why the membership is called Air Med Care Network. Yes.
I know, but it's, that somebody in the air, the hospital calls, whoever they call. They request, they said they couldn't go, you know, it was too windy, and they needed a larger helicopter. They had tried other places, but you're missing, so I don't know, people need to be aware of that.
Right, there are, there are times where weather does play a factor. But, and, but that's why I mentioned the ground service capability that we have, that we recover under the membership for us to be in the ground service with the paramedics.
On that part, they just had to.
And I would like to add to that, is we do go out and do a lot of outreach to patients, all the facilities that we service in your area, along with our ground, our ground services, any of the first responders in our hospitals. And we tell them, even though the weather looks bad on your hands, don't make that judgment, call us. Let our pilots make that judgment. If the patient is 400 pounds, too big for us to carry in that particular aircraft, we do have other aircraft that they can get you. So, our dispatch center role is to call two of those aircrafts. So in that situation, we just need to make sure that that facility is educated, please call us.
And I think that the situation, if you're, if you're a member, wasn't consistent enough that it didn't, and I guess you can realize, you have a viable, being associated with that.
Do you have any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
Okay, you may be a single mother, and I have a son who's 54 years old. Would you be able to be in, or does he have to pay?
Yeah, if, if he lives in your household, irregardless of race, age, or relationship, they are covered under that membership. If you have 20 people in your house, it'll all be covered by that one.
How many other towns in Concordia Parish, and, and how many other towns do this for the residents?
There are, most of the parishes, Sherry's gonna be able to speak to that, about, most of them are parish-wide. Some, there are, the cities that have it, I'm not sure, you answered my question.
City of Farid did have it, but due to their budget, they weren't unable to continue it. This past year, so they no longer have it in place. And with that being said, if they decided if you're down the road, if they want to put that back in place, we no, we no longer offer this program, okay? Tinsall Parish, Madison Parish, West Carroll Parish, East Carroll Parish, West Wishyina Parish, all of those parishes have it in place to cover everybody.
So in those places, the parishes themselves pay for it. And what's the price differential between a town and a parish?
It's, yeah.
Big difference?
And I'm, I, this is, the city of Vidalia is mine, it's up mine. But I also handle West Wishyina Parish. When they go to do theirs, theirs is, I'd like, close to $60,000. So, and it'll be, and sometimes theirs will vary based on the reimbursements, but we try and keep them all the same, you know, because we know towns and parishes, they struggle, and they've budgeted one number, we don't want to come in with another number. So you guys are, are grandfathering, like Sherry said, if this, if you guys let this go, as bad as it sounds, since our business model has changed, we, we no longer, we no longer do this. Talking appropriate, you know. Maybe get it back at a later date, they may go back and look at it in the city hall meeting. But as of right now, we no longer offer the municipal side plates. You guys are great, hon. Any more questions?
Anybody?
Thank you. How many helicopters do you have?
I have 120 in 138 states.
In this area?
In this particular area, we have nine aircrafts in Mississippi, and we have six in Louisiana.
Four in Louisiana.
In Louisiana, Shreveport, Rayville, Winfield, Opelousas, Kinder, New Orleans. Helping with Mississippi, because we just opened several new bases there. So, Natchez, Rayville, Carrant, that facility to, to wherever you are.
So Natchez is gone, and you're in Adams County at the hospital, it's gonna roll over to either Rayville, Opelousas, maybe even to McComb, you know? But because you're in, in Natchez, whichever aircraft is the closest, but they're, they're, they just keep rolling them.
And I still have been trying to do this, because they didn't do it, not clear, but we had.
Well, they, all they do is call one number, so let's just say they call 800-AirYacht, which is our dispatch. It's our dispatchers that will say, AirYacht 99, Natchez, is not available, they are currently out of the flight. We can call Rayville, we can call Opelousas, we can call Greenville, you know? They, they can actually see where these helicopters are at the time we can call them.
Right, so that's not a hospital's, uh, portion, they just need to call that one number. Now, in the event they call that one number, and something is really seriously wrong, wrong with the environment, and they can't, because you have a Level One, so you have to, it couldn't be rolled. So we couldn't, you know, I have a member, yeah, I never had that city.
We couldn't, you know, as a farmer. And I will add, I will add that we have 37 fixed wings, which is a claim, that sit across our foot from us with the closest landing in Houston. A lot of times they pull those fixed wings in, and we have to double every round, the right wing, and we have to transport them a lot further than we want them to. So, you could always, like, if you ever had to be transported in, you can always say, what about their?
Yeah, no, we don't want that to happen.
What about their, their service in Houston?
I, I would like to go ahead and maybe just go ahead and ask the alderman for a vote, but I'll, just on a personal note, it wasn't y'all's, I don't know if y'all's guys flew, my brother last week had to be flown from Monroe Streetport. And until you need it, you know, if it have one of our residents, you know, that's a small price to pay. And so, that's all I have to say, and I'm gonna leave it to the, to the board's discretion what they want to do. But I would certainly recommend us keep this contract.
I make the motion that we keep it.
Motion made by Alderman Garner, or her second?
Second.
Second by all the folks, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank y'all very much. Okay, number, uh, six on our list is, we seek board approval to revise our employee handbook. There's a new policy that's been required, state law requires this. We have also got our, an HR attorney to read over it to make sure everything's right. There's gonna be training required, just like ethics is required of, of every, every person who's a part of the town has to take ethics training every year. It's, it's, it's required, and we do it by computer, you can do it at, there's many ways you can get that training. However, we've already ordered the training materials to get us in compliance with state law on this, but however, we do have to make this policy a part of our employment handbook, so, employee handbook. So, that's, that's all we want to do, is implement this as a part of bringing this up to speed in our handbook on sexual harassment policy, or discriminatory harassment. It's, it's any kind of, this was discriminatory harassment, sexual harassment, and it's also got all the different parts of that, so, is there any questions on that?
I so moved.
Okay, moved by Alderman Dory, her second?
I second.
Second by Alderman McCoy, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, last on number seven, Alderman Dory called this week, wanted to get on the agenda to discuss an existing ordinance pertaining to political signage, and I'll just let her.
We're coming up for the election, and a lot of questions are being asked about the political signs, what's legal, what's not legal, how soon can we put them up, where can we put them up? And so I thought it best that we just go ahead and kind of have a review, because I know everybody's itching to get those beautiful signs up all over town. So I just, I just felt like we needed to review what the laws were, or the ordinance was in Vidalia, pertaining to those signs, where it is legal for them to be put, how soon, and, and all of that. Not to make any changes to what we have, not to alter anything, but just to remind everybody since that election is forthcoming. It does state in what I believe Jay has put on our desk, or whomever it was. They can have mine, any, any political person can have mine when we leave. But it does say that, you know, "Political signs erected in connection with elections or political campaigns are allowable. Such signs shall be placed no more than 60 days before the election, and must be removed within three days following the election or conclusion of the campaign. No such sign may exceed 16 square feet in surface area, and is prohibited on public rights of way." So that's what the existing ordinance states, and as I understand that, that translates to you can't put them on the right-of-way, is that right? That's what it sounds like to me, I wanted council approval there. So that's just a, just a refresher course in that, as far as private property?
Okay, what about the neutral ground between the sidewalk and the street? They plaster in front of the points of light?
It's a public, part of a public right-of-way, and it shouldn't be on there.
So it's, it's prohibited?
And now, let me say that, because, you know, it doesn't specifically say, public is prohibited, period. The 60-day is related strictly to private, and that means homes, businesses, the 60-day window is, it, now, outside the city limits, we have no jurisdiction, but this local ordinance calls for private residences cannot put out. And if anybody wants to, to question that, well, welcome to do that, but, oh, I think a big mistake was made when, we all ran for election last time, it was, this, this ordinance was waived for the election, and it was crazy.
It was.
And I, I wish it hadn't, I wish it hadn't waived, if we have an ordinance, let's leave it on there, because there were signs every and anywhere, and it's just, it was too much, it really was. And, Jim, please.
What we call a neutral ground from the sidewalk to the street, even if the street right-of-way did not extend over to the street edge, the concrete wall, boy, if you did do that, did that private property, so.
Okay, so it's private property, because it was, it caused business.
Certainly, it went a little over the street surface again.
Right.
It happened not the end, after the end of the sidewalk. That brings space for the, for the private.
I tend to complain all the time, because there are limited number of sign on the neutral ground, and the signs are just ridiculous, the, how much, and so we get.
Well, more being, it's either private property or it's town right-of-way, so, if someone puts a sign on, you have, some of the people are on the property.
So, in between the sidewalk and the street, and that goes there, I have the legal right to pick it up if we own that property.
I think so.
The individual, if it's owned, it's not liable, right, either way, it's not liable.
Now, the, the only thing that I, I think, and, and, y'all know we just had a school board election, I know we had several school board signs on public right-of-ways that, you know, I just, I just, you know, and I can't direct, you know, we, code enforcement would have to be the ones that come and pick those signs up. I, I don't have the authority, and, and Joey, I know that, you know, maybe we just have to get together, work together on establishing what's public, you know, right, I think before 60 days, none of it's legal, but, once the 60-day, we're getting that window, if we have some question or somebody calls, we're trying to make a determination what's, where's public or private, to work together on that, to enforce that. But, anyway, you, I mean, how do you feel on that? I mean, so we'll be ahead of that, so we'll know. Sure.
I just heard her say that, that somebody got some on, your sign, some way she can pull it up. You could have hit somebody's truck, somebody took your sign, and you pull your truck.
If it's on her property.
Don't put it on my property.
Wait a minute, well, I don't think what you're saying.
I think, I think they can get out my driveway, I don't see cars coming.
I understand what you're saying, but what I'm saying is, you could have stood alone on that, because the last time somebody knew somebody's sign, they got shot.
What?
Don't put your hand on somebody's sign, because, last time I talked to Ford, Ford was asking, you can't attack somebody's sign, you call the law, that's a law, dude. Your best out now, dude.
Well, be sure to call the proper authorities, because.
I'm stopping, I'm stopping.
I, I think, I think, I think, I think Mr. Dunbar's got a good point, I, just, just for, just for. I think that's, okay, I do think that's a good suggestion, that if somebody does do that and encroaches on your, and that you feel like you're, I would pick it up and, you know, call City Hall or Police Department with.
We don't ever touch them, we've had tenants that haven't taken them.
Yeah.
See, well, we have to mind, and that's another thing, you gotta mind, you gotta be going to take care of neutral ground.
Well, just a good quick story, but anyway, I, I think this is not gonna require any action.
No.
But, so, but just a quick story, that last, my last camp, campaign, I had somebody have a private sign in their private yard, their neighbor went and got it, and threw it in, threw mine in the trash. And somebody saw him do it, and they called me up. I actually went to that person's house and looked up at his trash can, there's my sign in there, so it wasn't a very good scene there that day, but, anyway, so I, I, really, if, if somebody does that, really just call City Hall or call Police Department, and we'll determine, you know, and then I'll go from there with it.
I personally would call, I, myself, I would call the individual and ask them would they please move their sign.
I'm just gonna call y'all, y'all.
Like you did with me.
Well, if you didn't have that with the school board election, that was, with the election you're talking about, that was out of control.
It was out of control.
I'm sure it'll be better with the US.
Listen, before we leave, let's make it clear, 60 days out, no sign.
That's, that's what, that's what the ordinance said.
Anywhere.
Anywhere.
In the city limits, we don't have jurisdiction anywhere other than the city limits.
And you gotta pick them up three days after.
Okay, and we even got, in the ordinance, it even specifies the size sign.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, this little, little teeny gray area that we're talking about, I think that ought to be homeowner-controlled. uh, I think that ought to be homeowner-controlled. Call, see that guy back there, with the white shirt on? Bad.
He doesn't know me at all.
His, his name is Chief Joey Merrill. Call him, call the chief, he'll make something happen, I promise you.
Well, I don't think it's gonna be wrong, but I just wanted to know what the, you know, proper, where the rights are, where the lines are.
Make motion, adjourn.
Motion made by Alderman Betts, adjourned, go here, second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Dory, all in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned.